Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest.
It is 6:04 PM. We're a little late getting going here. We're in the lower theater, regular select board meeting. There's a Zoom link. People are already on it. So with that said, call this meeting to order. First order of business will be to approve the minutes of May 5, 2021. Can I get a motion?
We approve the minutes of May 5, 2021.
I have a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, motions have been made and seconded to approve the minutes of May 5. Any corrections, deletions, or additions? Other than some spelling corrections, Scott, I think, reading through there, there's a bunch of letters here, there, and there, whatever, but anyway, somebody can proofread it later. That being said, all those in favor of the motion would say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Additions to the agenda for routine administrative matters and/or pressing matters that will require ratification at a future meeting. I see we got some force fire warden stuff here. That's just here for signature. We don't have to act on it because the car didn't nominate these people.
Yeah, we've done those appointments previously. It's just letters that we have to get signatures and...
Is this a new form or something? Because I know we signed one the last time for...
We did one for Larry, but there's also one for Sean as deputy for...
Right, yeah, okay.
There's three of them, let's get them.
Okay. Anyone else have any? Nope. Public comments on items not on the agenda, three minutes a person. Anybody on board? No one in the public? Anyone out there in radio TV land? Guess not. Managers report.
A couple of items. In a previous meeting, we had talked about the roller. You remember, it's shared by the town of Westminster and Rockingham. There is actually a maintenance agreement that goes with it. So Andy works out with the folks from Westminster if there's repairs or any items that need to be addressed after use. I think right now, we just basically finished using it not too long ago, right, Andy?
Yeah, we just signed back last November.
So we do have a formal agreement. It does specify, you know, a shared maintenance on that piece of equipment. So it's actually been a pretty good and useful tool for us to share it with Westminster. The solid waste district is having a hazardous waste collection day at the Springfield Transfer Station on the 25th. So it's next Tuesday. It's two to six, which is kind of an odd time, but there's a whole host of items that you can take there, things that maybe you have sitting around the garage in your basement, things like mercury at the ronometers, or cleaners, or old gasoline, or antifreeze, things that you might have sitting around no longer good. They will take those, so make sure that if you do have some of those items, it's an opportunity to get rid of some of the things that might be flooding up in your basement or just one of those things you leave in the shed and forget about. So that's for next Tuesday. The last thing was, we had talked over our budget conversation about possibly acquiring a plow truck through a lease return from another municipality. So Andy and I did some research. We got ahold of Craig Allen and ended up with a pretty good price on a 2016 Western Star. Andy's taken a look at it. It has some warranty remaining on it. The purchase price with the plow frame and all the additional items that we need is about $79,000. Taking our trade is about $12,000, it's only going to cost us out of pocket $67,000 for this particular vehicle. So we think it's a good opportunity for us to try it. It's coming out of a lease from another municipality. It'll be available to us, you know, relatively quickly, something we can put into service and take out of service. The older truck that Andy's been using, you'll have to give me the date, 2011, I think, was the old one?
2002.
2002, my bad. So we think that's a pretty good deal for the town. It's an opportunity to see how this works as it comes out of lease from another community, and we'll see in the long run if this is a, as opposed to the purchasing new, which this setup new is probably in the neighborhood of 135 to 140.
How old's the truck?
It's a 2016.
And it's coming off of hopping the year later, so five?
Yes. It still leaves us some money in the budget. If you remember, we were going to acquire a crew cab. We were going to go out and do that next. It's a little bit of money going forward to hopefully address some other capital issues if we go forward with that. That's all I've got for now.
Do we have any questions from the manager? Hearing none. Rick, did you sign these?
I did.
Okay, we'll move on to the agenda, and the first item is the Depot Street Bridge Alternatives. VHB is not here tonight, so we're just going to review what we've already got, and Scott will update us on...
We did put some information in the packets. That was an update to the alternative spreadsheet and had some updated costs. VHB asked for some more time. They're still working on some of their right-of-way costs, so they didn't have a final number to present tonight, so they had asked if they could hold off and then come to our June meeting. Since we did last go through the discussion at the last meeting, there was some updated cost items that I think the board had inquired about, that we had asked if they could give us some, narrow down some of the cost alternatives that we discussed. So if you notice, some of the new items in the off-alignment bridge, the pedestrian bridge cost, they have listed at $597,450. That's in that third column. That's a new number. They had highlighted that in yellow. They also added new cost numbers for the relocation of the off-alignment bridge for the water and sewer utilities, so that was $164,000 and $166,000 roughly for those two items. Then they also updated the contaminated soils item, which is also a town responsibility as well. That's towards the bottom of your cost sheet as well. So that trickles down to our bottom line. We're hopeful that at the June meeting, they'll have all of these numbers up to date and an opportunity then for us to have, at least give them a sense of the priorities of the town, where we're leaning, so that they can get to a point where they can move forward with the final design. I've asked a couple of things of the engineers, and it might help offset some costs. One of them being, is there any additional source of funds if we were to acquire the pedestrian bridge, if we did the off-alignment bridge? It might help offset some of that cost. And the one specific number that we were, or the program we were looking at, is every year, the state does pedestrian, basically pedestrian improvements, and it's an opportunity to, it's a competitive project, and that's usually in June of every year. But this would be the type of infrastructure that would be fundable through that program. It would help to offset some of that cost if we did in fact agree to an off-alignment and acquire the bridge in its current condition and want to restore it as a pedestrian connection. So that's one option that we'll get into further at the next meeting. The other item, which we just don't know at this point, is if any of this additional utility relocation can be paid for with some of this new, this new federal money that's coming. We had a webinar this afternoon. All the rules are still not complete. They have 170 pages already of rules, and they're not complete yet. So as you can imagine, this is going to be an interesting exercise in federalism, but there's a hope at least that we might be able to gain some offset or the utility costs if some of that money might be available for us to use as well. But as you look at the bottom line, there's a substantial investment involved if we go forward with some of these, some of these options. The other thing I wanted to bring you to your attention was, we did put in your packets an updated debt schedule. As we had discussed in the budget, there is some falloff in our current debt obligations. If you look out at our long-term debt and you look down at our 2023 and beyond, you'll see that our total debt obligation drops dramatically from 2022 to 23 and continues on in a reasonably lower level from that point forward. Now, if we agree to some sort of program with the bridge and it has a substantial cost share, the earliest that you would have to obligate funds would probably be the construction, they said now, would be at least a year away, and then you'd have time, obviously, after that before you had to obligate bonds and then start payments. So you'd be looking at late '23 or sometime in '24 before those obligations would be due. So just some information to sort of again help you understand all the moving parts and pieces, and we'll get more information directly from the engineers at your next meeting. He did assure me that they will have the right-of-way and the complete program cost done so that we can discuss it in full and have a full presentation at that meeting.
Scott?
So it looks like the next meeting is going to be June 9. Are they going to be able to make that one?
Yes, yes. I actually told him June 2, so I made sure that he was going to be a week early.
Yeah, it's a Wednesday, first Wednesday of the month.
Right. That way, if he's late, we're still on time.
It'll be the 9?
Yeah, because, no...
No, actually, it's the 2nd.
It's the 2nd, right. Unless we, because that's when we start our one meeting a month.
Right.
Be all in June, July, and August, so, okay, that'll be on the...
That'll be on the agenda.
Okay, anybody questions from the board in regards to this?
Absent a competitive bidding process, Scott, how were these numbers developed?
Well, what they basically do is they do structures work all through the state, so they take averages of other projects, and they have a pretty good sense of what these various costs are. So they just use their database of costs, and they add certain inflationary factors to it depending upon location. I think that's why, quite frankly, some of these costs went up, because they updated their cost database to reflect the rising cost of construction in a lot of cases.
Will there be a competitive bidding process when the contract comes up?
Yes.
Because that way, the town might save some money if, you know...
Yeah, Vtrans has to do it as a competitively bid project.
Good.
But, you know, there are some unknowns. I think the big fear is anytime you get into contaminated soils, those numbers can jump quickly. So there's some, there's some risk in that, and obviously, just currently, the cost of construction right now is not favorable. It's, you know, extremely expensive right now.
And the scarcity event is, we're really rolling the dice with that, right? If there's an extended scarcity event, it could run into millions of dollars, is that right, for our unexpected compensation for the Great River Hydro?
I think we'll have to get into the contract language for that, because I think at some point, as municipality, you cannot have unlimited exposure for that type of, you know, who knows what could be the problem? You know, if a problem occurs like that, we can't be on the hook. So there has to be something that we can hedge that, that risk with, whether we're buying some sort of insurance at some point, that, you know, we're responsible for X dollars, and for a premium, they're responsible for anything above. There has to be some way for us to limit that risk and exposure, because I don't feel comfortable just rolling the dice with those numbers. And in construction, I think we're all aware, anything can happen. We're dealing with a canal that's, that's old, and certainly, that leads to a lot of risk, and I'd be very concerned about that.
Who would be negotiating with Great River Hy... The town or Vtrans?
Well, it's not our project, so I think we'll be part of the overall conversation, but ultimately, it's a Vtrans project, so they would be responsible.
Would you have anything?
Do we have any additional information on the condition of the existing bridge above what we've previously heard?
As far as I know, they haven't done any additional core sampling or any other specific engineering that I've been aware of. That's one of the things that I'd asked them for, if there were some updates for the next meeting.
The only question I had was that, as you and I talked earlier, it's contaminated soils. We can't seem to get an answer to whether they found any. They seem to be all done testing, and it's been a couple of months since they're done, and it seems funny to cough up an answer as to whether they have found any or there's none there, because that would change, drop a number out of here too, if we...
I know there had been some contaminated soils found when they did some of the work on Canal Street there, so you can certainly venture that there is other areas there of contamination. Just what it is, how significant, and how it can be abated, that's, that's information I just don't have right now.
Yeah, I know. I've talked about... Bonnie, do you have anything before I go back to Rick?
Yeah, it says new pedestrian bridge. Is it necessary to make a new bridge? Can't you, can that, can the existing bridge be repaired enough to handle pedestrian traffic?
I think this, on the off-alignment, the idea was that you would take the existing structure down and then build a new structure that would not interfere with the canal walls and have a lessened impact with any possibility of, you know, any kind of concern about these scarcity events. So I think they were trying to limit that exposure.
But it doesn't look like they have according to these numbers, though.
That's for the overall project. Don't forget, there are a lot of moving pieces in this, in this whole project if they're going to go forward, so...
So when they talk about a new bridge, it would be in a different location than the current bridge?
Yes, for the off-alignment.
For the off-alignment, new pedestrian bridge column here.
Correct.
Okay.
I know the bridge is over 100 years old. I'm just wondering how much more life it might have. I mean, buying at the top of the market for construction, which we are at now, if we could let this go for a couple of years and then buy when prices return to earth, is that a possibility?
I think you have to be careful that anytime that there's transportation money programmed, if you don't use it when it's programmed, you lose, you run the risk of losing it, because there's always people behind you waiting for other projects, like we've been waiting for a long time for the Vilas Bridge. So I would be very concerned that if we said, well, we'd like to come back in 18 months or 24 months, that money might not be there, or another five-year cycle. You could literally fall out of that whole cycle of funding. So I'd be concerned that we'd be at risk for that.
Thank you.
Anybody in the public here?
Peter, I have a question. Can you, when you talk to them, can you find out what the impact, they think the impact will be on pounding and, or putting in the pilings? I just worry about the canal walls, if they have to pound. I don't know what they're going to do for the pilings, and if it's pounding them in, I'm worried about that wall. So the least impact on the wall, if they have any idea what, which option would be the least impact on the wall, canal walls?
Yeah, I agree. I think they'll obviously make a recommendation for a contractor for the means of construction. We can ask if they've gotten into that level of detail. I don't know how far they are in their design documents, Sue, but that would be something that they would ultimately, you know, if they're at 60% or more designed, then they might have that information by now. But we can certainly ask.
And the other thing, issue with leaving the bridge there and making it pedestrian, then we are liable if that falls into the canal, because it will.
Efficient.
Eventually. Maybe not in 10 years, but it will.
And then we got the situation on Bridge Street, so that's coming up in about eight years down the road supposedly, so. There's a lot of, like Scott said, there's a lot of moving pieces here. Go back to Casey, you had to comment.
Here's a microphone.
Yeah, please.
Okay, there you go.
State your name so they can get them for the minutes.
Good evening. Casey Cota from Codon Cota. I did want to make a couple of comments, just because, obviously, a large landowner on the other side of the bridges, and we do a lot of commerce on that side. I had talked to several people over the years on why good common sense would lead us to be an off-alignment bridge. That was my original design probably five years ago, and I talked to Chip about that prior to it, when he was still here, and rationale being that because of the constrayment of traffic on the island, we have an issue with current trailers, which ours are about 40 foot in length, but if we are going to redesign the island to take more commercial business down there, a lot of the tractor-trailers are 53-foot trailers. So even if we were allowed to go over the existing bridge, we couldn't make it, not because the bridge isn't wide enough, but because the road that you're going onto isn't big enough to give you enough swing to be able to go right. And what I, my hope with the board, and you're all very concerned about what's prudent for the town, I want us to not forget that the bill, the bridge was originally built for what was traffic going to be 60 years from then. I hope that when we make the decision as a town here, that we keep in mind that what is traffic going to be 60 years from now? Let's not serve the purpose for where we're at today, because that doesn't move the town forward, and I don't want us to be a penny wise and a pound foolish, and we're sitting back here 20 years later going, God, I wish we had built the right bridge, when it was cheaper back then, right? And that will always happen. We have 100 employees, probably 103 right now. We have over 50 employees working on the other side of that bridge every day. We get more than probably 10 to 12 truckloads a day coming into the island, whether it's from FW Webbs, whether it's from other supply companies, whether it's from lubricant. We also have lots of truck traffic from the town of Bell's Falls, the village of Bell's Falls, the town, because we supply the fuel, and we need to be able to keep that traffic flowing, not just for us. The other thing I think we tend to forget is the tractor-trailers are important, because if the dam ever goes down and they need to replace one of the, one of the turbines that were running electricity, or one of those massive transformers goes down on the other side, how are we going to get it across? Because when I talked to Chip, I thought the timeline was six years that we have to redo the bridge on Bridge Street. When we redo that, and if we don't change this bridge on Canal Street to be able to incorporate tractor-trailers, they're going to have to build a temporary bridge. And to do that, I would probably estimate the cost, and Peter could probably tell you from his past life, it's probably going to cost you anywhere from a half a million to probably a million dollars for a temporary bridge, just to be able to divert traffic if we're going to try and do it on the Bridge Street side, to incorporate tractor-trailer traffic. That would mean Mr. Buckley's property, the nice little grassy area there before the post office, you know, that would probably have to be taken over if we were going to try and put a temporary bridge across. My concern is that if we build this offset bridge, and even though there is initial cost here, it may in the long term save money for what the bridge costs for going on Bridge Street, because now we can route traffic around. I have hope that they will fix the Vilas Bridge someday, before my kids are my age, and, and we will be able to route traffic around. And I think one of the things that we will find, if our mission is to grow our town, to have more visitors, tourist state, the last thing you want is truck traffic going through the town, and if we could get the Vilas Bridge to be fixed, an offset bridge, then that eliminates the amount of tractor-trailers that have to go through the downtown. I think that's valuable. I don't like driving through the downtown with all of our trucks. I drive them. It's not fun. There are tight corners, and if we can come up with a plan that makes a lot of sense, and we're planning for the old Robbie Paper location, to be able to create more business, bring more jobs to our community, which I know we're all in favor for, and continue to move our town forward, I want us to remember having the foresight of being 60 years ahead of where we are today. And that is my only advice. I know that we are going to incorporate costs. We've done lots of things in this town to make things better. We spent $10 million on a middle school that neither made the gymnasium, the auditorium bigger, or any of the classrooms bigger, or more innovative, but we spent $10 million to do that. We felt it was a worthwhile investment for our children. I think a worthwhile investment for our children is creating more industry in this town, creating better jobs, people that pay taxes to help defray more of the costs so that we can have more homes built in this area, by putting in the infrastructure now to be able to incorporate all those changes. That's my hope. I, I know I said a lot here, but I, I am passionate about what we do. This is our 80th year in business. We're going to have 80 more. It's going to happen, because we really care about this community, and we give back, and we, we make sure that we focus our time doing those things and employing local people, because I think that's where our strength is. I appreciate everybody's time and listening, and I look forward to hearing how we move forward.
Thank you very much, Casey.
Well said. Anyone else from the public?
I just wanted to support what Sue Hammond said earlier about the old bridge. I don't know if board members have read the bridge inspection reports. If you haven't, I would urge you to do that. It's certainly interesting when you read it. This is from 2019. "The base of the arch along the water line has voids that penetrate beyond the first layer, layer of reinforcing." And when they go on, they say unable to gain access to all structure areas. 2016, "The extent of deep spalling along the base of the arch is unknown due to inaccessibility." 2013, "Built around the turn of the century with limited and non-continuous reinforcement." Further, they go on to say, "Several feet of the northwest wall continues to rotate outward, as much as 12 inches." I just think the board really needs to consider the expense that Sue talked about to the future of this community if that old bridge is retained. I also believe that there needs to be access to the island at that point, whether it's a bridge or whether it's a footbridge, but there needs to be access. You've got development that's occurred, one of them being the Exner Block, where Housing Vermont bought the land that the Waypoint Center was built on, so that they would have parking for the apartments that they were improving and building in the Exner Block. You also have the Canal House, with all that apartments that utilize that bridge to get to their extra parking, because they have very limited parking. And I think we see the upper floors in downtown buildings as being probably future apartments, and if that is going to occur, that end of the town needs convenient access to the island and the available parking. Walking all the way up to the end of Canal Street, crossing the street, for seniors particularly, at a dangerous corner, because cars are going to be coming down that hill at a speed like we know they do, I just think that is something that I really would appreciate the board considering, and I would really urge you to look at these bridge reports. The bridge is rated structurally at a two. The Bridge Street Bridge is rated at a two. So we have two bridges on the canal that have serious problems, and we need to think about all the alternatives, and particularly, the concern that I have down the road of a bridge that, as Sue said, could very well be falling into the canal someday, and we cannot afford that expense at that point. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. I've thought about that parking stuff, too. I mean, if you don't have any bridge there, and you've also got the garage, it's going to be more apartments, and everybody has to walk up and cross that off-alignment with the big trucks going, and then come back down again? We need to have some, some way to get across.
It'd be a fun prospect.
No matter how you look at it. So you have any final comments or?
Yeah, I just have, is it possible? I mean, it sounds like the real two options are the steel truss. Because with for various reasons or the new off alignment with a new pedestrian bridge. I don't know if that's, I mean, that's sort of what I'm seeing is the possible options. I would like to know if it's possible just to get a general sense of what are how that would look like, how we would pay for that over time. I mean, because that's a the new off alignment, new pedestrian bridge. If we don't get extra funding for it is a huge hit. But how would we spread that out? How would how would that look? Just an estimate of what that would look like in increase in taxes. Or a tax part of our tax rate, what part of our tax rate would be paying to cover that? If that's possible to do, I think that will help us make a make a decision.
Well, the only way we could do it, Sue, we'd have to stick it in the long-term debt. And the way to do that would be to start looking at it, quite frankly, in 2024. Because I don't think we'll have any costs in twenty-two or twenty-three necessarily. I think all of our expenses will be twenty-four and beyond. So we can program that in for that estimated cost and just get a sense of what that might look like as you go out.
Yeah. Because we also have to remember, though even our debt is going down, we also are increasing our paving budget. So we're not going to offset all of that reduction in debt. There will be some, we haven't had a discussion about what we're going to do with our long-term debt and how we're going to balance even that out. But it would be interesting, it would be good to just get a sense of what this really means financially. Other than it's one point eight million dollars more to go that option than it is the steel truss.
Yeah, I agree there. I had the same question, Sue.
Because the debt that comes off in 2022 is three hundred and seventy thousand dollars according to the breakers. It's cost applied to us, which relates to an eight cent tax decrease.
Yeah.
So going forward, I don't know what we're looking at for paving, but if we're trying to stay at four hundred thousand dollars a year, that that's gone. You're not even going to say that.
No, we're looking, I think, we were planning to go up at least five hundred and leave it steady at five, if I remember right, according to the the long-year plan of paving that Everett developed.
We're fifty now, and I think there was a discussion at some point of going to a longer-term maintenance budget of five hundred. But it was unclear when we would do that transition.
Right now, Town Hall debt is up in 2025. The library goes to 2032. Just for people to think down the road, you're going to be paying for that till 2032. The library. Just look at what a cost.
No matter what you do on on the bridge debt, it'll at least be a twenty-year bond. So you have
I was going to say.
You're looking out to 2044 or in that neighborhood.
I think Everett has his hand up.
Is there someone else? Have you let the rest of those people in? Okay, Birch, okay. Anyone in TV land have any questions on this particular? Everett? Unmute yourself.
All right, hey, you ready? Okay. All right, I was going to wait till June meeting, but I'm going to hold, I guess, just in case I can't make it then. I just want to voice a few concerns I've got here. Actually, back to the the road thing, I'd be happy to give you guys a tutorial of that if you ever, you know, a free tutorial on where that last stood on a road plan. But anyway, this goes back, when you go back probably about twenty years ago, when the town was considering to buy the the power dam, the biggest problem I had was condition of the canal. And it appears that, yes, you know, it probably was well-built. It looks pretty well. And I can't believe it still, it has held up that long for probably over a hundred years. But the way I see it, depending on what option the town chooses, there are never things that could happen. If we, if the town decides to leave an old bridge down there. One of the things I kind of got like six items here. There's could be an unknown amount of maintenance dollars, especially as the bridge gets older. Sue, I think, mentioned the collapse of the bridge and no one's going to know when that does collapse. It's going to be, you know, with with concrete, there's not going to be any any movement like a steel bridge is just going to go when it goes, kind of like a retaining wall, like a concrete retaining wall. But at least a retaining wall, you'll see the leaning first. And then if the bridge goes down, you could have partial collapse of the canal walls. And to me, that's one of the worst thing, one of the worst things you can have because that could end up in a rippling effect of destruction of canal walls further downstream. And with that, you could have, you will have extremely high power bills for anywhere from a year or more possibly because you got the bridge in the canal. You got walls that need to be rebuilt. You know, that would be multi-millions of dollars that really could potentially bankrupt the town. And and even greater than all those five things I just mentioned would be a loss of life potentially. So I'm not saying all that's going to happen. I don't have a crystal ball. But one option, a different option that you might have is possibly picking up the piece of land. If you if you did keep the bridge where it is, pick up the piece of land on the west side of the canal, I think it's owned by Floyd, it was owned by Floyd Lefoe. Get your proper turning radiuses in there. You know, the cost of that house might be, who knows, probably less than two hundred thousand dollars, but that could go through arbitration. Or however they got to do it. And then purchase that, put a little park in there, get the proper turning radius and have a win-win. You'd have a win, you'd have a sidewalk. I mean, you have a bridge there for people going up to downtown. You'd have a bridge with a better turning radius, it wouldn't hurt Code and Coda. But I do worry for all the people rocking them. If they leave that bridge in place, no matter what happens, the town should not be stuck with that that old bridge. So maybe Sue's right, either option. I don't have options on my sheet here, but the steel, the steel trust option or a new bridge option, removing the existing bridge. I just wanted to throw my two cents out, that's it.
Thank you, Matt Scherbet. Good to hear your voice again. Anyone else out there? Guess not. Okay, let's go down to item number two, which is adopt the local emergency management plan, which is in front of you, it's been corrected. One other correction. You misspelled Andy's name. You only got, you left a Y off on one of his. First one is corrected, the other one just ends at D. So you're going to correct.
That's his brother.
He also wanted to call him Ann.
Ann and Andy.
Yes, on the last page there is the highway person there. It's got listed there because I just picked that up when I was going through. Yeah, page six, if you look at Road Commissioner, it says Ann Howard. So we just need to put a Y on there. So. Does everybody have a chance to look at that and catch anything else? Okay, I'll take a motion to adopt it. With the correction. Go here a second.
Second motion.
Motion is being seconded. Any further discussion? Motion been made and seconded to adopt the 2021 Local Emergency Management Plan. All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. And we're down to number three, discussion of the solar array options, town gravel pit update.
Thank you. Just I wanted to update a little bit of information. We did get an email from one of the interested parties this afternoon, which I distributed to the board as well as an updated letter of intent from one of the interested parties as well. And I handed out just, I think it's a lot easier, the larger scale map, you can flip it over and see the see the phases from a you know, ones on a regular scale map, one shows obviously a photographic map that that also has the phases as well. So a couple of folks I know have walked the pit, I think Bonnie went up, I think this last week. Peter and Andy and myself walked as well. So there are some some concerns that that we certainly need to address. There is still some active areas. Andy, you want to jump on that other microphone because that way I can. Yeah, that's great.
Push a little button.
So obviously, you know, we have a couple of concerns here. The phasing doesn't really match up with, you know, how we currently use the pit. So Andy, maybe you can just walk through what's currently active and what's closed. So the board gets a better sense of where the, you know, where we're actively mining, where we still have some restoration to do and then also in the areas that also also are closed.
We're actually in the process of getting an extension for phase four and phase two because in phase four, we still have gravel in there. And on over next to phase two on that line between four and two, we have a stockpile of topsoil. And then over by the border of phase one and two, we have a stockpile of topsoil that's going to be used to cover phase four when we're all set and done in there.
Right. Now, you've set aside some monies that have carried over. I think we've got about fifty-nine thousand roughly in our Act two fifty fund that sort of rolls over. That'll help fund some of that work. But that that's just one of the the concerns we have going forward. You want to talk a little bit about that phase three and phase five and phase one area, Andy?
Yep, phase five, phase three and phase one are all done. They've been topsoiled, there's grass growing. Actually, one of the landowners up there by there mows it and they walk their dogs down there all the time. But we don't use that section for anything right now.
We have an rough idea how many acres that is right there.
I don't know. You would have to have it surveyed.
Maybe the map.
I don't know.
There's some approximate acreage that I don't know.
Yeah, one of the maps had approximate on it. Yeah.
So Andy, when you say you're all done, I mean, I've 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 looked at it. Especially phase five certainly looks like it's all done.
The only thing we have done in phase five in the last ten years was during Hurricane Irene. We use that for stockpiling all the debris we took out of the rivers.
So when you say you're all done, that.
It's closed up. There's no act two fifty. It's all done.
It's it's actually, we could sell it tomorrow.
Yep.
Okay, that's phase five, same thing for
Phase three.
Five and three are completely done. There's no contingencies with two fifty or anything.
Nope.
Okay. But one and two, it's still a little time to go.
Two and four.
Two and four.
Yeah, phase one, phase one is done. Except, I mean, we got the, our loan piles right on the border of it.
Okay, so two and four and four is the area that you showed me where you're very, very active then.
Four is still quite active.
Right. And you don't want to give up four ever, right?
Well, no, we don't want to ever give up the original pit, which is seven point eight five acres. That's at the beginning, when you first drive in, that section there.
Yeah, and I at the last meeting, I questioned that, but after being down there with Andy and him explaining it to me, I totally understand why you want to keep that. One of the big things that I wasn't aware of is that the use of that land is grandfathered, so you don't need act two fifty. It doesn't come into play there. If we were to try and do those activities somewhere else, we'd be dealing with trying to get act two fifty permit. So I totally understand why that's a very important feature.
We have the luxury of having this pit where a lot of other towns don't. When we strip a road, we save the blacktop, we bring it up here. And every so often, then we crush it up, make it into gravel. And it's close by to a lot of our other roads, like Cambridge Port Road, Brockham Hill, all those areas that's close by where other towns, other towns have to travel all the way into Walpole or Alstead to get gravel, and we have it right in our backyard. And we make it at like last year, I think it was five dollar, low over five dollars a yard we were making it at. And to go buy it over in Alstead or Cold River, you're looking at eleven to fifteen dollars a yard. So it's a big savings.
And if we do get the permit renewal, I'm sorry, Peter, it'd be another five years on the renewal.
Yep, with a six year of a closure.
Correct. Five years of activity, a six year would be closure.
So when will we know we get the app that that done?
They're sending it into the state.
We we have some updates. We were working with our engineers last week. We have to do a couple of things, I think, to certify. There were some boundary issues and something else, but I think it'll be probably ready to go, Peter, by the end of this month for consideration.
So Andy, whereabouts, phase four is the active area right now?
Yep, yep, that's where we have.
And that's where all the stockpiles and everything is.
Yes.
When we
Yep, they're at the beginning, we have, we have a pile of two and a half and we have a pile of inch and a quarter gravel in there. And we got some five minus, there's and then there's some stockpiles of loam that's to be used to cover phase four as well when it's done.
Because, you know, and all that material that up there, the loam and stuff, will have to be screened and worked over at our cost. So that's another thing we have to think of. I'm very hesitant about, you know, leasing or selling this because it's valuable. Even if, even if we close this up, we probably get three times what the value of what we would do if we
You're talking about this portion.
Of the whole portion.
The whole.
If in five years, if this is exhausted and we don't have anything to do with it, if it's just short-sighted, but because once you give it up, trying to get it up
Are you including?
Is is going to be very difficult.
Are you including this phase five area when you say that?
I think one of the challenges of the phase five area is access. Because again, you know, we're going to have an active operation, hopefully for at least the next six years, no matter, you know, what the decision would be to go forward. So the the only other reasonable access could potentially be through the old state of Vermont Police Barracks property if it goes back up for sale and if it changes ownership, but that's still speculative. It's been discussed, but nobody, as far as I know, has done anything official to put it back on the market. So the only access would be, I suppose they could try to get an access onto one oh three. I'm not sure how they could do it because there's wetlands there and there's other consideration. So truly, the only other access to get back there would be through our existing gate. Got some elevation change there. It'd be, it'd be a tough, I don't know.
It's a wetland right there, too.
Yeah, I couldn't hear any of that, what was said.
So my question, Sue, was that if you look to the west of the Savage property, it looks like there's a space where a driveway could be put through there. But it looks, I guess you'd have a wetland and there would be a challenge. Andy tells us there's a wetland right there.
Yeah, there is some wetland there. There's also, if you look at the elevation lines, you've got about a, what, a fifteen-foot change in elevation, maybe twenty? It's a fairly substantial change in elevation to get from basically where the road elevations are down to that to that level.
Yeah, it's quite, it's quite steep.
Yeah. So I mean, it's not impossible, like any engineer can tell you, you can engineer anything. It's just a question of cost and and that would be a substantial cost to make that happen.
So what's the problem with letting someone have access to our gate?
Well, there's a couple of issues there, I guess. First of all, it's an active pit. So we'll have, you know, we control access now. If we have a leasehold property or a another person who's an owner, there'll be some concern about how do we handle access if there's any issues of them in the, in our pit? Because again, we won't have any way to keep them off of the other, off of our property. So there's a liability concern with that. I don't think it'd be an active situation. I don't know how much actual maintenance is done on an array once it's in in place, but there will be some activity there. So.
They ran into that problem up at Andy Anderson's Array where Butch had was taking out gravel. And once the array went in, there could be no more extraction. Even I think there's issues much greater than we think about. It's not just giving them a right of way or an access. It really, it really impacts what we're then able to do in our own pit. But we should know that.
Right, because, you know, when when you're doing that operation, it's a dusty and kind of dirty operation, no matter how you do it. And I'm assuming that's not great for a solar array to get covered in dirt and dust. I'm guessing they probably wouldn't appreciate that. So that's a concern.
Peter, would Savage, do you think we might negotiate with Savage to get an easement through his property?
Why would we do it?
Well, the person who buys it would have to have access, right?
Yeah. I mean, I don't think the town needs to, you know, accept any expense. Even that's what I was beginning to say, is those piles of material and stuff is going to be handled again. And this may have to be crushed and stuff, some of that big scum pile. It's, Andy mentioned there, being there to, it's going to be left to level that property and reclaim it. It's going to take some expense to do that. And then, you know, if we wanted to get rid of this, then somebody else ought to be footing the bill to take care of that because I don't think we want to spend the time and move that because I don't think we got enough room to store that in the current active area of the pit right now. So, you know, we can't move it right away. So...
There's no sense in moving it three times.
No. Right. So...
How much of Phase Five did Green Lantern want to use?
I don't know how much Green Lantern was looking for, but M H G there is the one that sent it that...
Right. I mean, they want to do a whole big thing. They wanted to buy the whole piece. Yeah. But I'm talking about Green Lantern.
If you look at their email from today, they left it open-ended.
Right.
They really didn't, they didn't specify a size or any specific acreage. They just simply said northern portion of the area.
Right. We need money for this bridge. And Green Lantern wants to buy or a 20- to 30-year lease. And they're going to do a smaller array. Phase Five is ready to go. And it's a good distance from the active area. I've been down there. And I don't know. When I was there, I was with Chuck Wise. We drove down this road. We came to a gate, and he said to me, there's access from the north end. But there's a gate here right now. And I don't know where that went. Maybe it went through, I don't know. Andy, do you know what I'm talking about?
Yes. There's a, there's a south entrance, and then there's a north entrance. There, just past Savage's land, you know, as you're going up 103, you go past the old State Police Barracks, it dips down. And at the bottom of that dip, that's where that north entrance is of the pit.
So there is another access.
Yeah. There's two accesses. That way, if there's ever anything that comes up, we ever, you know, once something happens.
That's what I thought. Yeah.
What happens a lot is when we're crushing, we're making gravel in the old pit because we're, and we will do is we shut that off so nobody can come in and out of that pit, that section of the pit. So while we're crushing, you know, for MSHA reasons.
Sure.
So we use that north entrance. So we will use that north entrance when we're making gravel. So nobody, you know, we can access the two and a half gravel pile and that other inch and a half that's in Phase Four right now.
Right. But, so if we leased, say, they'd rather buy, but they said they would lease, Phase Five to Green Lantern now, we'd get some money, some significant money, and they could share this northern access with us. Isn't that so?
Well, as Sue just mentioned, that may not be the case. I mean, if the other pit that was there got, you know, closed off, we weren't able to access the pit. So if we can't go in one way, how else are you going to get in there? So...
What?
Well, those are...
You wouldn't be going near where they're doing any crushing.
Does it make any difference? You didn't hear what Sue just said.
What did you say, Sue?
Can you repeat what, I didn't understand what Sue said.
They wanted to get stuff, sorry, they wanted to get stuff at the very far end of where Andy's pit is now, and they were not allowed. I mean, it doesn't mean it's the same thing here. We need to look at all of those situations. And then there is the wetlands issue. We may be able to go over that. But if a new project goes in, I don't know what it does for the wetlands that are there.
Can we find out?
Yep. We do need access to the pit from both sides.
Yeah. I understand.
For emergency reasons and when we're crushing in there. So we can, you know, like I say, so we do still need access from both ends of that pit.
Yeah. I'm not talking about giving it up. I'm talking about allowing a solar company to use it as well.
So a question for Andy. So we do have a deeded access through the State Police property, right? I mean, that's where, that's the entrance you're describing?
No, no. Wait. Pass there. Pass there. It's in between Savage's and the old Stoddard's garage. And 103, as you're going up through, if you're heading north, you go past the old State Police Barracks, you go past Savage's, it starts to dip down.
Yep. I see that.
And we have, that's where a north entrance is, right there.
Oh, okay.
It's actually on the other side of the wetland.
I see. The photograph, I can't see it in the photograph, but it must be in the...
Follow the green.
Yep.
Yeah. I need to pack it. There might be a better, a smaller map in there, but I think it...
All right. I mean, I kind of think we should be aggressive about doing something with Phase Five since we have this enormous cost with that Depost Street bridge. And there are companies that want to buy the whole lot. But from what I'm hearing, it's going to be years before we're ready to let go of any more of this property. Is that right?
Yes. The minimum is six years.
Six years. So nobody's going to come along and give us $300,000 for this within the next year. It's not going to happen. But Green Lantern wants to go on Phase Five, right?
Yep.
Is that right?
This is Thomas Hand. Could I, could I say a couple of words?
Sure. Sure.
So Thomas Hand from M H G Solar. So we had provided the purchase offer for the entire parcel, or the majority of the parcel. We were looking to install a 2.2 megawatt system. So that's 2,200 KW. The other size system that we often will install is a 500 KW. So that's a net metering system. I believe that that's what Green Lantern had proposed for this Area Five, so the northern portion. So a system of that size typically would use about three to maybe three and a half, perhaps four acres of land. So that's from the fence line in. It varies, obviously, just based on the configuration of the land and any, you know, environmental setback, things like that you have to do. So call it maybe four acres. From an access perspective, there's really two things to think about. One is how do you get into the site with vehicles? And then the other is how do you get your power lines out to, back to the grid? So those are really two things to think about. Sometimes they take the same path in, sometimes they don't. As far as the question of sharing an access, it's quite common for us to lease a portion of land and to have an easement with the landowner to access the solar project. So the land would stay with the, with the original owner for the access. And the solar project would receive just an easement that would allow, you know, trucks to traverse the access road to get to the leasehold area. We have done, I don't know, seven or eight projects on slate quarries in southwestern part of the state. Similar situation, we've got MSHA requirements, you've got heavy trucks, you know, blasting, all kinds of heavy activity going on. Based on what you've described and crushing going on on sort of the southern side of this parcel, I wouldn't see that as causing a problem for a solar project that's up in this Area Five. It's pretty far away, and the likelihood of having any negative impact on a solar project would be pretty minimal. Obviously, my opinion, but, you know, just based on what I know from building projects like this and building projects like this next to active mining operations.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
And we would be interested in providing, you know, it sounds like the purchase option for the larger project is not of interest at this time. Certainly understand that. But we would be interested in providing an offer for a 500 KW size project if that's more in line with what the town is interested in looking at.
So what, what is the amount of money? If we, if it was a lease, what would we be looking at for money? There's visions of super money here, and I don't think that's the case.
Yeah. So the 500 KW project is, you know, about 20%, 23% of the larger project. So, you know, being honest, just scale down your expectations from purchasing the entire property. Typically, when we lease for a project like this, the range would be kind of $9,000 to $12,000 a year for three to four acres, something like that.
So you're talking $9,000 to $12,000 for the four acres, which would roughly run about $12, $3, $3,000 an acre?
Yes. Correct.
So we're really not going to be rolling in the dough as they so to speak. The $286,000 that you mentioned the last time you were here was for the whole...
Right. For the whole thing.
Forty-some-odd acres or something, I believe, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct. That was a purchase. So, you know, if we're talking, it's a bit apples to orange, you know, lease rate versus purchase. But if we're talking lease rate and we're talking four acres, well, let me back up. If we're talking about four acres, we're probably talking about a lease. It doesn't make a whole lot of sense to subdivide four acres in the middle of your parcel. You know, that's just kind of a mess of a land deal in our experience. So typically, when you're talking about a 500 KW, you're probably looking at a lease instead of a purchase. If we're looking at using the vast majority of a parcel, we typically look at purchasing it because at that point, the landowner probably doesn't want to have to deal with the headache of it. They'd rather have the money upfront. So it's a little bit, you know, sort of different things, right? But if we're talking about a 500 KW, in my experience, typically, that means a lease, not a purchase.
Well, I know it's not piles of money. But it just seems to me that our general predicament, we ought to make some money where we can, you know? There doesn't seem to be any reason not to. I mean, tell me the reason not to.
Well, the problem is, can I jump in, Peter?
Yeah. I was just going to say, you look like you want to say something here.
Yeah. No, I mean, the problem is, once you put in that 500 kilowatt, you're done. I mean, do, is it better to wait when we're done with the pit and then come back and see whether somebody would be interested in putting a 2.2 in at that point? Wait six years, seven years? Because once they put in that 500, if I, correct me if I'm wrong, they are not able to add another one in that section, that parcel.
As, as the rules currently stand, that is the most likely scenario. Correct.
So would it make, I mean, so it might make sense just to wait, not rush this, and then limit what you can do if you, I mean, if you can do a larger array in six years, assuming there's still, I'm assuming the demand for solar is just going to go up as we try to do more renewables. I mean, maybe the cost will get too high and people won't be investing in it. I don't know. But I feel like we're limiting ourselves because it's a small portion. I would like to see the whole thing, a solar array, honestly.
Yeah. Well, so would I. But it's years away. So you couldn't do anything else on any of this land if you put a small one up here in the north end, ever?
Not another solar array at this point in time.
Yeah. I mean, I, this is sort of what I, it's kind of what I deal with every day from a permitting perspective. I will tell you that it's, there is no reason it couldn't happen other than what the PUC decides. So if the PUC decides that you can put them next to each other, you can. I have a project on an old gravel pit in Wallingford. We did a 2.2, and then we're doing a 500 KW right next door. The PUC seems to change its mind on this question. And if I had to go permit the project I just described today, I don't think I'd get a permit for the second project. I think they would shut it down. And so I can't tell you with any certainty, I don't think anyone can, what the future would hold in that regard. But I can tell you, if you went to permit it today, in my opinion, you probably wouldn't be able to do two projects side by side.
Yeah. Thomas, I thought the two-project rule was for 500 KW arrays. It also applies to two different size arrays?
In the last year at the PUC, it has. Prior to that, it didn't.
Okay.
So, you know.
I certainly don't think we can predict what the demand for solar is going to be in six years. I mean, it's intermittent. So it's, you know, unless you put in battery storage, certainly is not, you know, we may have something better in six years. But that, you know...
Yeah. I mean, I guess the only thing I would say is, very difficult to predict six years from now in anything, right, in life. In solar, you know, the industry has evolved very quickly. It's growing very quickly. So it's even more difficult to say what's going to happen in six years. The advantage of doing something now is, you know, call it $12,000 a year of income, add a couple thousand more in property tax on the solar array. So town probably gets $15,000 a year. Let's say it's the next six years, you're close to $100,000 of value between now and, you know, your future point, at which point maybe you can do another project, maybe you can't, hard to say. But that is $100,000. That's a, you know, a significant amount of money for anybody.
There, can I ask you a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
If, if a 500 KW were built on this Area Five, would that leave enough room for a 2.2 megawatt? Or are we not sure?
It would be pretty close. I mean, if, if the, in my calculations, you got about 20 acres of usable space in total in there. So, you know, three or four for a, for a 500, you kind of have, probably have enough for something close to a 2.2.
But that's assuming that we give up the whole thing and not keep any of it for ourselves, which we do need some of the northern end for our purposes. So there wouldn't be that same 20, I don't think.
Yeah. I mean...
If we're keeping the, if we're keeping that grandfathered 7.5 plus the, would be the 7.5 plus the two, because you have to enter through there, right? Or is that included in that two? It's hard to read on the map I have. Andy, do you know?
What was the question?
The, I mean, the old pit that we want to keep, right? And then the entrance, that part, that 2.5 or whatever that is, is that what that is? That first bit where you enter in a gate?
Yep. But also, there's another section, too, of it's a total of 7.85 acres.
Oh, that includes that entrance, the 7.8?
7.8. Yeah. Okay.
Okay. All right.
Yep.
So we would have to, we would ideally want to keep at least the 7.85 for our own purposes. And that would leave the remainder. So if you take that out of the 20 usable, that's only about 13-ish left usable.
Can I say something else, Sue?
Yep.
And another thing, too, is where the old State Police Barracks was, we may be able to get that later in the future, too, to make gravel as well. So we would have to access through Phase Four to get to that section between Phase Four and Savage's property, where the old State Police Barracks is, that corner piece. We could always get that in the near future, too, make gravel out of that. And the easiest, and the easiest way to get to that would be from Phase Four.
Yeah.
Would the area that you would want to use for access, is that part of what Thomas is calling usable or not? Anybody know?
Access to the gravel on the State Police Barracks, you mean?
Yes. So Andy just said he would want to have access through Phase Four area in case you got...
Right.
The gravel in, in that lot that's owned now by someone else.
Correct. That's not in calculation. That's all new. That'd be net plus land. That's...
Yeah. That's hypothetical. Totally. I know. But just, just to clarify, there's this much land, but it's not all usable, right, Thomas?
As I look at this, this rough, rough numbers, it looks like the town wants to retain something on the order of about eight acres of the usable 20, which would leave about 12 approximately.
Yep.
Peter, I have a question.
Yeah.
Andy, can you take a rough guess at what the value of the gravel would be under the State Police Barracks, please?
Without doing any test drill, digging, no, I don't. Without doing any test drill, uh, digging, I know, I don't know. But we don't know how far down, you know, it, you know, the, you know, it. No, I, I don't.
Okay.
We'd have to have an engineer come in and we, we'd have to do test holes and whatnot.
All right. And you've been digging pretty close to it there on that, on the, the south side of it, right?
Yep.
And that's pretty, is that high quality gravel right there?
Yeah, yep. It was.
All right. So it's likely if this, if the seam runs that way, it's likely to have high quality gravel there.
Yep. And who knows later on down the road too, when Hanson's savvy, we could end up with that piece.
Yep.
Geez, Andy, all of a sudden the pit got big.
He's crazy for that gravel.
Exactly, hard to permit. Andy has a point in that, in the fact that gravel ain't cheap. If you've gotten access to it.
You need to keep.
You better hold on to it because if you need to, I don't know, play Sells and Rockingham, it would be, we could get a gravel pit. And act 250, no, they're, they're, they're not easy to come by.
No, yeah.
Put a gravel pit. Nobody wants one next door.
That's for sure.
So, you know.
Good point.
It would be nice to keep access to those pieces of land.
Right.
So. Okay, I guess that discussion is going to be ongoing, I guess.
So, I mean, are we ever going to decide this? I mean, what else do we? What, what other information can we delineate right now, what we need to know in order to make a decision?
Well, it looks like some people would just want to snatch and grab money and run. Uh, to me, I, I'd be very hesitant to, to, to go that route myself.
No, I'm not saying grab money and run. I'm saying. It's been, it's been years and years and years, and this discussion needs to happen. We're discussing here tonight. What more do we need to consider? That's all I'm asking.
So phase five is the area that's feasible for lease now, most feasible, right?
That's the only area that's actually feasible.
Staff would recommend if you want us to help maybe frame the question that Bonnie's trying to frame would be, that you leave the active pit alone, leave the other area that had closed alone. And you just look at the area five. And our recommendation would be that you, you don't give up control, you just lease. You would never want to sell. But again, that's the board's pleasure. That would be a staff recommendation.
And, and could Thomas hand speak to, would that be appealing to a solar developer?
Yeah, I mean, if we're talking about a, a three to four acre area, our preference would be to lease because. Subdivision of a small, little landlocked parcel like that just doesn't make much sense. You end up with weird. Property lines that cause everybody problems in the future. So a, a small leased area would, would make a lot more sense and. You know, based on what I've seen and what I've heard, it sounds like area five is the right place for that. It's relatively flat already. It, it looks to be relatively clean. That seems like the, the, if you're going to carve off three, four acres for a lease for a solar project, that seems like the place to do it.
And would, would that have access to the power lines that you need?
Um, I believe the power line comes in on the south side. Let me just pull it up here.
Yeah, it does.
It does.
Well, Thomas was looking for, this is Kevin Davis from North Solar Technologies, and I would just echo what, what Thomas just said, you know, if phase five. Or area five were available for lease, there is certainly some appeal, you know, to our company and, and potentially leasing that to build a 500 KW project there.
And what type, how long a lease do you, are you talking 20, 30 year? What type of lease generally?
What we would do is a 25 year lease with optional five year extensions at the end, two optional five year extensions.
And with the leasing. Would the lease include removal? I, I, I know solar panels, uh, efficiency fades over time, so you would remove anything after it's, um, was no longer useful?
Correct.
Yeah, that's correct. The, the terms of our lease would require that.
Most require restoration to the previous condition as a condition of the lease. So.
Okay.
That's, yeah.
Good.
Typical language.
Thanks.
Hang on, Peter.
Okay.
My overall understanding here is that. Not a lot is going to change from the way that is right now. Um. We, we are always going to need to retain a portion of that phase four area. For as long as we can foresee. You know, you might be able to close part of that in the future, but is that really going to make a big difference though to the way that the rest of this property can be used? In other words, is. If we wait six years from now or something, are we really looking at a situation that's really going to be any different than what we're looking at right now? I just, I don't see that, um, that anything's ever really going to change in our situation here, unless I'm missing something.
We would, to get to those other pieces of property, we'd still need access through there though.
Yeah.
If, you know, that's, that's what I'm saying.
Then that, I think he, I think he said that, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
But it's just, it wouldn't be any different down the road than what it is right now. It's like, as long as we wait, nothing is ever really going to change. Am I understanding that? So we're never going to be able to make use of the rest of the property any better in the future than we can now.
Right. So the phase five smaller lease is the best option that we will have in the, in the foreseeable future? I guess where we, are, are we there?
Kind of seems that way to me, and it's not that I'm trying to grab the money and run. It just seems like. Why don't we do something?
I'm just wondering if there would be, ever be any more advantage, you know, if, um, to hold on to this, would we ever be able to actually use? More of this property, not for, not talking about just solar array, not even limiting this to that, but for any kind of development though. Um, is there ever any possibility of having, you know, any more flexibility than we have right now?
Later on down the road, yeah.
How later?
Well, it'd be, it depends on if, if we ever get these pieces of land, you know, it wouldn't, it wouldn't take long because they're not huge pieces of land. It wouldn't take long to, you know, get the gravel out of it and. And then you'd have this whole area. And then another thing while I'm here, uh, talking, um. As, as I've worked in this pit a lot, this pit is a dust bowl. It is nothing but a dust pole, bowl when you're working in it. Matter you chloride that road or whatnot, it's because the sun beats on it all day long. It's next to the river. The wind blows, dries it out, even the, you know, the material you're working, the dust is coming off that. You can be working in one section of the pit, that dust travels all the way down to the next section. It is very dusty in there. We have to, when we're running the equipment, we have to clean the, uh, cab filters out daily in them.
Wow.
That, that's, that's just food for thought.
You feel that, uh, the dust would actually go up to phase five?
Dust goes right up that, oh yeah, oh yeah. Hopefully it rains quite a bit because it is very dusty in there. Yep.
How does that affect, uh, either Kevin or, or Tom? Uh, how does that affect your operation if there's, they get covered with dust continually?
Yeah, it can certainly diminish the production of the panels if there's dust sitting on them. You know, for prolonged periods of time. I mean, you can just kind of look outside on a day like today and see, you know, the pollen collecting on every flat surface. The dust is going to do the same thing. And so if you go through a dry spell, you know, for a period of a few weeks, um, you're going to have decreased output from the project.
And once we start using that, uh, make, uh, screening that top soil that's right next to phase one, it's really going to carry that, that dust from the top soil and everything because we're going to be working in that area. So, you know, so it's really going to carry right over to them panels. Just food for thought on that.
So do you guys want to back out of your proposals?
Uh, can I just add one thing briefly?
Sure, go ahead.
Ralph Mima couldn't be here tonight, but, uh, his company is also interested, they're still interested in a 500 KW array. Uh, and I've also heard from Nova Solar, which develops the array in Rockingham, um. And, uh, another company, Integrated Solar, they're also interested. So we have at least five companies interested in the site.
So maybe the best thing to do is go through our proposal often and say, okay, boys, the bin wars on, let's see where we go.
I guess, Peter, the question that I would have for the board is, in order to be fair to the developers and to give them the best opportunity to meet your consideration. What would be, uh, if we were going to put an RFP out for a development of a 500 KW solar array, what are we specifically asking them to do? And I think that's really the question the board needs to answer. We can, uh, we can create an RFP for anything. It's more, what, what would you like us to, how would you like us to proceed if, if that is even what you want us to do? I guess is, is sort of where, where I'm at.
Is there any reason to delay on the, the five KW plan? I mean, I think we've, have we moved through all the, all the permutations, all the options?
Well, we've only had two, uh, and we've got one here and Mr. Bertram's come up with two or three other ones, so.
Yeah, but on, but the phase five, the, the smaller array in phase five is pretty much what looks like is, is plausible at the moment. Is that, does that seem right?
Seems right. And I think my options, Rick was referring to options for us to consider what to do. The only option that seems feasible now is lease five.
Yes.
So you got something?
No, I was just going to say, I would just be really, I would double check on the access issues and the ability to run a solar panel when, when there's. I mean, a solar array, when there's an active pit, um. I just don't know enough about it. Um, I just know that it was, was a complication at, at Andy's pit, Andy's solar panels. So. Make sure before we decide to put out an RFP, RFP out, that we've got all of our. Ts crossed and Is dotted, that we can do this and we're not going to make it difficult, um, for somebody to get the authorization to put it in.
I mean, this is Thomas, that, I, I would just say that's a pretty straightforward provision that you just provide. You know, in the RFP, it just says, you know, we want to, want to be clear that the town needs to maintain access, you know, to the northern. Uh, section of the property and. Just, you know, it's just a notice to, to anybody who's, uh, who's bidding.
Scott, last, last word.
No, I'm just. Just sort of getting a sense of how the board would like us to proceed, so.
Do we need a motion here? To do something?
We're going to need a motion, right?
Well, would the motion be to ask the, um, town manager and staff to develop an RFP? For the, for the phase five area for a five kilowatt?
To develop an area for potential lease, I think is.
Yes, for lease.
From what I heard from your conversation, I, I don't want to, you know. I think that would be one, one area that we could potentially, you know, put that together for you and then have that. Go out and solicit, like, uh, Peter said, there are five companies that have expressed various levels of interest. It would be difficult for them to. Get back to you and you have something for consideration at your June meeting if you so desire.
And when, wouldn't the dust issue be the solar developers question?
Their problem, right?
Well, I think it's like with any, um. With any arrangement with land use, you have to be careful about what you, uh. We would not give any consideration to a leaseholder in terms of we are not going to limit our operation. So. The town would, it's basically develop it at your own risk.
Right.
Knowing full well that you're next to, next to an active gravel pit. That will be active for at least a minimum of six or five years plus a closure.
Right.
So I think that's a pretty fair thing to tell somebody so they can make their determination accordingly.
Absolutely, that would be part of the RFP.
Has, has to be.
Yep. And then the prevailing winds, Andy, you said are from, they can.
Well, that's it because you got, you got the river right there. So you got the winds coming up, you know, they follow the river, the valley right through there.
Uh huh. Okay.
It's very dusty in that pit.
Thanks.
Just to make a final clarification, just, you know, for myself and also just for the public. So we're, we are always going to have an active, um, pit on that site for the foreseeable future. Um, if anything, it's going to actually grow if theoretically we're, we were able, are able to purchase more property and start extracting more gravel. So the rest of this property is not really going to be any more available for any type of future development than it is right now, um, as far down the road as we can see. Because we're always going to have these issues of the access and, um. You know, potential conflicts with the, with the work ongoing on the site. So. There is not really any other possibilities of. Developing it for a larger solar array unless we, uh, are able to. Uh, make some, some changes from, you know, the situation we have right now. And we don't see that happening. So we are dealing with what we've got.
That's, that's why I understand it. What about you, Peter?
Well, uh, I, I think that they're right that the other way to do this would be a lease in that, in that, but I also think, agree with Sue that we need to make sure that we're not. Going to hamper our operation by just running out to a lease and then find out after the, we've consummated a deal. That we're stuck and we don't have access or, or issues. So I think we don't want to end up with the other permit. Uh, uh, other pit there and, and find out we can't get in there and can't do anything with it. So. That's a hazard we, that we need to look at and that maybe that's part of the deal that when we do the RFP. That, that proviso is somewhere mentioned. So everybody's aware of what's going on with it.
Can you set, set up, uh, to cover all those concerns, Scott?
Sure, we can draft a, an RFP. If that's the direction the board would like us to, to pursue, we'll certainly do that. Probably be a good idea, Peter, maybe to do that as a, as a resolution. So then we can move it forward with an understanding. We'd have something for your June meeting.
Yeah, I mean, so. Okay, so, so we have a motion to have them proceed with an RFP and, and. Make sure that we're not going to get caught in a bind here.
Okay, do you want me to, I'll take a shot at it.
Yeah, go for it.
I, I move that the, uh, uh, town manager, uh, prepare an RFP. For a, uh, five megawatt. Solar array at the, in, uh, the phase five area of the town gravel pit. And that it, that the RFP be, uh, ready for our review at the June 5th meeting?
June 2nd.
June 2nd, sorry. Okay, so there's a first draft of a motion.
I, I think you, you said it, it's, it's a 1,500 watt array, right? What is it?
500 kilowatt.
500, 500.
500 kilowatt. Sorry, okay. Sorry, got the numbers wrong.
All right, so. I'll second that motion with, uh, with that.
Okay, any further discussion?
I'm wondering what Andy feels about that. Are you okay with it?
I'm, I'm going to speak on a taxpayer level on it, not as highway superintendent, but as a taxpayer, I think that land is going to be very valuable over the next, and after we're done. After the town is done with the phases, I think that land is going to be worth a lot of money. Especially the way the housing market right now is booming and the, the land value is going to go up. I think that land value is going to double in the next 15 years. I, I think the town of Rockingham is sitting on a very good piece of land.
Well, there's no.
Right next to Route 103. It's right next to the railroad tracks. And it's right next to the river. I mean, you got Killington, Okemo, you got the ski areas that aren't too far away. I think that land is all worth, going to be worth a lot of money in the future.
But there's no water and sewer.
You can put water and sewer in, but well.
Well, that's, that's.
You got the river right there. It's not too far away.
That's, that's a sort of a hang ten argument that there's no water and sewer because you look at the transport park, the country club. Applied bolting, they don't have trout and sewer, but they seem to be operating fine.
It's, it's right there.
You have a septic system and it drilled well.
I just think that land's going to be worth a lot of money in the future.
And if some, as, as a developer wasn't going in there to do a housing development, I mean, it's, it's ideal.
Right next to a gravel pit with dust flying around though?
Well, once you get it reclaimed. Andy's talking, you know, 10 years or 15 years out, so.
Yep.
And we put their solar array in there, that you're just probably going to degrade the value of the property and, you know, um. Nobody's going to want to be next to a solar array. I mean, you go up, you know, on 103 and look at Route 7 of Rutland, they've got solar rays all over. That's all you see. And I sure as heck wouldn't want my house next to one of those, but that's, that's just my opinion. I don't like to get up in the morning and look out there and see acres and acres and acres of. Panels.
Well, that's not what we're talking about really.
Oh, complicated.
There's a motion on the floor in a second. So.
And Peter, we, I mean, we can always. After we develop the RFP, we can, I mean, we don't have to accept any bid. We could decide that.
Right.
Yeah, we don't want to go that way. The work to be done of investigating what the limitations are, if there are any, um. That would be done as our. that would be done as the RFP is developed.
Yeah, because that provisos, I was putting there with the town, you know, reserves the bid to reject any and all bids, so.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I think part of this discussion that's been pending for almost a decade is exactly that, you know, to really look at what we can do, what's involved, come up with an RFP for us to look at, and then really discuss, well, do we feel safe with this? Do we think this will work? Is this a good deal for 25 years down the road compared to whatever we might predict coming up for the use of that land? But I think at this point, we, we should ask the, ask the staff to draw up something for us to consider.
The motion's on the table in a second. I'm gonna ask, call the vote currently. Are those in favor of the direction of the manager to come up with an RFP with all the provisos we've discussed tonight? Would say aye?
Aye.
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 Are those opposed would say nay? Nay.
I'll say nay, I'm not afraid of it.
Okay.
So it looks like it's three, three, did you say it?
Aye.
Three, four to one, and the motion passes to have the manager or the staff prepare an RFP for a lease on, on the property.
This is Thomas, and might I say one, one more word on this topic?
Yep.
As, as a developer who, you know, is interested in this parcel for solar, and having just sat through the discussion that, that you all just had, and I participated in, and having, you know, I, I have a project right now with the town of Castleton, we're about to go to construction. We've worked with a number of towns. If you want to get good bids from folks, I think you, as an organization, I shouldn't say think, I would suggest, sitting across the table from you, that it would be helpful to provide confidence to bidders that you actually want to do this. And so I said, I'm encouraged that you're taking this step to put together an RFP, but I, I think it's hard for folks like me to bid with confidence if we don't know if the, if the party on the other side of the table really wants to do it or not.
Well, I, I think, I mean, my understanding and my expectation is that when we see a draft of this RFP on June 2nd, we are going to decide if we want to do it or not, is that right?
Yes.
Yes.
I would think.
And, and so then we will, we will say, yes, we want to do it according to what is stipulated in this RFP that Scott presented us with.
If we put it out for responses, my understanding would be that the board would be interested in at least pursuing it, you know, to the best interest of the town. We might reject all the offers because it's not in our best interest, but we would, it would be a sincere effort. It would not.
I see.
Yeah, we're just, we're just asking for a draft at this point for us to look at, because people have various, you know, concerns of greater and lesser degree.
Fair enough, I appreciate that explanation, I just wanted to make sure I understood the process.
All right, well, thank you everybody for participating and throwing all the information and, and out to us, so we'll.
Thank you, Andy, for coming, appreciate it.
Ready for June 2nd?
Thank you, Andy. Nice to see you again.
Thanks again, guys. Okay, let's go to number four, which is update on the Vilas Bridge funding. There's a whole parcel of information in here about the Vilas Bridge.
Just a little history, just to kind of give everybody, I don't know, sometimes we get lost with, you know, multiple efforts that went multiple directions. And I know that Rick and Bonnie have been doing some things with our New Hampshire neighbors. So I just want to give you an update on what we've been doing in, in our offices, just to get a sense of, a lot of feedback. We've had multiple conversations with staff members from both senators' offices, as well as from our congressional representatives. And we had put in an additional request, if you remember, we had put in a community project request through Peter Welch's office, and at the last meeting we discussed that we did not get funded. The same process was requested through Bernie Sanders' office, so we did send in a request for funding through that appropriations process. In conversations with some of the staff people and, and people that are plugged into the appropriations world, they think that the greatest path to success for us to get the Vilas funded would be to change the staffing formula as it currently exists on the STIP. I think there's a great sense of hesitation from people who do these, these larger scale projects and who work on regional types of federal funds, that because this has been put forward as a 50-50 project, it's created a lot of hesitancy from people to fund it. So it seems like it's a self fulfilling prophecy, we'll just continue to be added on to the five year STIP, and it will never seem to consummate, and we'll never get to the point where we're building a bridge. So our conversations have been, how can we then get a federal appropriation to help us get to the typical share, which is a 90-10 type of reimbursement? And also then, knowing that the bridge owner, the 90% share owner, is not in Vermont, they're in New Hampshire. So that's, you know, a complicating factor, but it's not a fatal factor. So that's been the tenor of our conversation, we've made some progress on those conversations. It, it does feel like we're getting closer to a potential solution to those concerns. But we still don't have a clear path forward in terms of getting that, that appropriation in the next, in the next set of congressional activities, only because the Congress has been running for a number of years on a series of continuing resolutions. They have not passed their base appropriations bills for multiple fiscal years now. And I guess that's a, you know, I don't want to offer any political commentary, but I, I think it's a reflection of just the divisions within, you know, those bodies. But without passing an appropriations bill, it'll be impossible for us to get the money that we need for the bridge unless we can get a full appropriation. So hopefully, some of the effort here can be expended towards getting our congressional folks to work with, sort of removing this process of continuing resolution and work toward a full set of, you know, I think there's 13 appropriations bills ultimately that fund the federal government. So obviously, the one that we're the most interested in would be the transportation portion. So that's the genesis of the most recent activity. I know that both Bonnie and Rick have had additional conversations with our neighbors, so I'll sort of let them fill in what, what their activity has been as well.
Okay, well, I, I haven't talked to anybody in Wapole since the last meeting, although I did email the woman who schedules things for their select board just today, because I was waiting for sort of a summary from Gary as to where things stood in terms of our efforts. I haven't heard back. I'm hoping to go to their meeting on June 3rd, because they meet every Thursday, and fill them in on all these complicated things that, that we've done between, with Senator Sanders and so forth. It all kind of boils down to just a couple of simple points. I mean, Gary has amassed a ton of stuff here, going back, 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 years and years. And, and it was kind of challenging to sort of boil that down to something that I could, you know, give to Wapole to, to think about. And you can really boil it down further to basically, the price tag that we're looking at is probably not correct any longer. It's based on 2019 construction costs. And the folks at Bernie Sanders' office says, we've got to work with Wapole, and we've got to have their Senator Shaheen help Leahy sponsor this earmark somehow jointly, and, and make sure that it is designed to be used expressly for the purpose of this bridge and only this project. So it's imperative to talk to them as soon as possible and get their select board involved and trying to contact their senator and see what kind of cooperation we can, we can spark up and foster. That's my understanding of the situation, that's actually crucial.
I would add that Gary has been tremendous in coordinating. I don't, Bonnie and I don't want to be Lone Rangers at all. We, everything that we do, I report to Gary, so he knows what's happening and he shares what he knows with, with me. So we're, we're trying to pull in the same direction. And from my thought, if, as we continue, Gary seems to be like the guy who should be. I don't know whether you want to be the centralized information point or Gary, what would you prefer, Scott?
Gary is working on the grants and all the applications, so I've been trying to funnel as much information through him, because he's been keeping track of deadlines and submission requirements and, you know, these submissions are incredibly complex, and it's really, it's frustrating when you try to meet all of these requirements and then, you know, it's, he's probably the best person to continue to do that.
Okay, we'll do that.
But you haven't talked to anyone in Wapole yet, have you?
No.
No, you've just been dealing with our Vermont state representatives.
Yeah, we're trying to get a joint resolution through. It's bottled up in the Transportation Committee at the moment. Carolyn, Carolyn Partridge, I spoke with her a couple of days ago. She thinks she's going to call up the Chair of the, of the Transportation Committee and see if she can dislodge it. The, I've not, Leslie told me that they had, she thought we wouldn't get it in this year. Carolyn's going to make a last ditch attempt, so I'll keep you guys posted with any developments.
Now, the resolution we saw before was addressed to Welsh, but this, this would be addressed to Sanders, right?
Yes.
And Leahy, yeah.
Yep.
So I think that's.
You all set with that?
Yeah, now, do, do we want to talk about, can Rick come along with me if I go on the 3rd or not?
I don't have a problem with that, but I, as I told you on the email, it should be, you know, no one, no one member can act as, as on part of the board without expressing.
Right, so.
It was in the tutorial.
Yeah, I remember that.
So.
Right, so.
That's the only thing I was reminding you of, not, I was scolding you, but I was just, you know, just saying.
Yeah, no, you, it was good, because I, I needed to be reminded of that.
Yeah.
So if you want to come along, you can come along.
All you need is a consensus of opinion that it's fine, if nobody's objecting, then, Rick, have you got the time?
I do, I blocked it off.
Yeah, he, he has to come along.
Four years are better than two anyway, from what I see, so somebody may interpret something.
You okay with that, Elijah?
Sue, you all set with that?
Yeah, I'm all set, I'm all set with it.
Yep, good enough.
Good, all right, thank you.
We're all set then. Let's go on number five, which is a highway access permit for the St. Edmund's Church. If anybody's not familiar with the property on 22 Main, it's been purchased by a out of town, out of state person, they're converting it to a home, and they're looking to put a driveway in. So if you have that information in front of you, are there any questions? Another question I asked, to talk to Andy a little bit about that, is the slope of the driveway, of the sidewalk, when it comes down to the driveway, it's not really shown well here, it just shows what they're going to do, how they're going to go to the sidewalk, then from the sidewalk up into the church property, but it doesn't show you if they're going to have to lower the sidewalk. And I just want to make sure that the slope going, if they have to lower the sidewalk, the slope is proper so that, you know, anybody may be accessible. Scott mentioned that that's what we should put in the motion if we so want to approve this, and I don't really see an issue of not approving it, but, so, anyone else has any questions?
Well, what did Andy say about that slope issue?
Oh, he said it would have to be done that way anyway, so. And then I also asked him about the curb, because there's granite curb down there, and the steps that go up to the church. I talked to him, I'm not sure if that's involved in the process, I think there's three or four steps that goes up from the roadway. And the only time I've ever seen those used is when they had a funeral, you know, and they carried her, the coffin up through there, but it's not, no longer going to be used for a church, so that leaves that out. But I don't know if they have to remove the steps and if that's part of the driveway area, I, I don't know. I'd get on it with a tape measure and figure this out, but.
So to make a motion to approve this, we need to stipulate something about that slope?
I, I kind of wrote a motion out, and Scott can correct me if I'm doing it, but move to approve the highway access permit to include compliance with ADA grade of the sidewalk.
That's perfect.
Yeah, that sounds good to me.
Off the cuff, folks.
Sounds good. From, from what I've read.
Brilliant, Peter, brilliant.
From what I've read, they're responsible for making the sidewalk better, equal to or better than.
Yeah, they have to, yeah, it would be, it's asphalt currently, and so it's not an issue of concrete, but the curbing is the other issue they have to, you know, and then if they do any problem with damage to the road, they're gonna, you know, they try and dig out the concrete, I mean, the granite curb.
Right.
And it's got to be, you know, moved down, so it's got to down, they've got to tilt it properly.
Right.
And I don't know if they have to cut it on one end to make it, because otherwise you're going to have a gap and, you know.
There'll be some work that'll have to be done to feather that properly, but that'll be part of the rest of the engineer's requirement.
Okay, and Andy will inspect it to make sure it fits our, meets our standards.
Yes.
Great.
ADA is just, I think it's good to have it specifically in.
Right.
Your approval, just so that there's no misunderstanding or confusion.
So did you make a motion, was that your motion, Peter?
That's, everybody's happy with that one.
I'll second that motion.
The Chair normally doesn't make them, but I'll, I'll make it if somebody wants to second it.
I second it.
That was too quick, boy. But anyway, the motion was made and seconded to approve the highway access permit for 22 Main Street, Saxon Drive, which is the St. Edmund's Church, if anybody's not familiar with it. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor would say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Sue?
Aye.
Okay, I guess we're all, all in complete on that one, so that's.
I know.
I know, she was out there somewhere. Okay, now, let's go to number six. Adopt the summer meeting schedule. Basically, it's a decision whether we do the first Wednesday or the second, or the third Tuesday.
We've already got things planned for the first Wednesday, so.
We have, and that would be for June, July, and August, and that's not excluding the fact that if there, if something comes up that's urgent, we may have to call a special meeting.
And we do know, we have one joint meeting already scheduled for Tuesday, the 29th of June, that would be with town and village, so.
Okay.
Just in case you're missing, missing having a night to yourself, make sure you, you know, wedge that right there.
Yeah. Thanks, Scott.
You don't have it.
So.
What a guy.
We need to entertain a motion.
I move that we adopt the first Wednesday as our regular meeting for the summer schedule.
So that would be for June, July, and August.
For June, July, and August.
All right, we'll hear a second.
A second.
Any further discussion? There was some question from Scott as to meeting at the meeting house in either August or September. But the situation involves with Zoom, I don't know how we can bring something up to work Zoom up there. You know, we don't have to make that decision tonight.
Yeah, it's a little tough with trying to get microphones and to try to record.
Oh, yeah.
What would be the reason to do that?
Historical society has asked, and it's been sort of a traditional thing that the board tries to have.
We've been doing that everyone, so.
Oh, okay.
You know, it has to be a quick meeting, short agenda, because it's dark quick.
Yeah.
No power up there. And you aren't allowed to have candles, so unless you want to bring flashlights, which we've done in the past.
Yeah, by August, it's getting, getting dark earlier, too.
Right, right, and so.
We'll see if that'll work.
So we, we get, as time goes along, we're gonna have to decide that tonight, but I just wanted to bring that up, so keep that in back of mind. All right, that's done.
No.
No, we didn't vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did we have to vote on that?
Yeah, we did, I'm sorry. I think you're awake, so somebody's not there. Okay, all those in favor of the first Wednesday of the month for June, July, and August for our summer scheduled meeting would say aye?
Aye.
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 Aye. Are those opposed would say nay, motion passes? Okay, now we can go down to our financials, everybody has that in a packet, are there any questions?
Yeah, why is the, why is the type point size so small when you're not even using the whole page?
I know, we're working on some things with Nemrec to try. I know. We're working on some things with NIMREC to try to help with some of the reporting. And I've been, I've been told by Cynthia from NIMREC that they're doing some updates. And I'm praying that when those updates come through, that some of these problems will be corrected because it can be a little difficult.
Yeah, I mean, it's got to be like a six point type or something like that. And it's not even, doesn't even fill the page. Okay. I'm just the graphic designer in me.
I don't know. Financials are better than the debt schedule.
Yeah, I know.
Debt schedule is a bit of a challenge. You gotta work on that.
I mean, it's unbelievable.
It's a test to see if you guys are reading this stuff basically now.
Yeah, well, this is how I read it, just like this.
I've got, I've got a question for you, Scott, if I may. The food composting is almost 300% of what we budget. Is that because we didn't plan on getting into food composting? Or?
Well, the state mandated that roughly a year, a year ago in July, right?
July of last year, it was mandated. Otherwise, it was an honor system. You know, you could bring it in, we'd, we'd take it, accept it.
Yep.
So we had a contract, and we sort of get, did an estimate on what we thought our costs would be. But what we're finding, and maybe this is a good news, bad news problem, is people are using the service more than we anticipated. So our costs are higher than we anticipated for the program.
So we pay someone to take it and make it into soil compost? Is, what is the?
There's actually a contractor who comes and hauls the material, then takes it to a site, and then they mix it and eventually turn it into compost.
And was that, was that contract bid out by, by?
We have a solid waste district. So all the contracts through the district go through a process. This one, I don't have much information on. I wasn't here when it was set up. So I can do some digging into it and find out more about it, Rick.
I'd love to.
Yeah.
I'd love to know more about it.
I'll do some, I'll do some digging. I don't know a lot about it myself.
A little background, seeing as I worked down there for about two and a half years as a volunteer. When we first got there, the compost disposal was free. They used to take it to a farm in, over the border in Massachusetts. I think, I want to say Greenfield, maybe Gardner. And they used to feed it to pigs. So it didn't cost us anything to get rid of it. But once the state mandated it, it had to go to a specific point. And then we ended up going to this composter where they take it out. But the other thing was that we were also, back a couple, three years ago before COVID hit, we were collecting returnables. Donnie Sly, who used to work there as a volunteer at Westminster, would load his pickup truck up with bags and bags of bottles and cans and things and take them to Brattleboro, to the redemption center down there, where we were getting a nickel for a nickel. They suddenly decided that they didn't want to take any returnables from outside of Brattleboro. So we lost our disposal point. So we ended up trying to get to Springfield. They'd come down with their own truck, but we were only getting three cents returnable. So that's how the offset to the cost started to get the offset of the food composting. But we don't do the bottles anymore, basically because of COVID. Plus, we don't have a place to put them. Nobody takes, disposes of them. So Scott and I have been talking about that all, all for go along. But that, yeah, I agree that composting is getting expensive.
Yeah. And if the bottle, there's a bottle bill that's been passed by the House and has the Senate passed it? There's a, that will?
I thought it was held up there.
Because they're going to make water bottles and wine bottles.
Oh, yeah, everything.
It's going to, so the volume at the recycling center is going to, I think, really take off. It's going to be, if, if that bill passes.
And the complicating factor to there is a lot of the stores that sell that, according to state statute, I believe, are supposed to take those back, the returnables. You'll find, if you talk to the merchants such as Lee Size or anyplace else, any of the grocery stores, they don't have the storage room. They don't want to hire a person to deal with the bottles when you bring them back.
Yep.
And so a lot of them aren't collecting that stuff. So the only place right now is Springfield or Brattleboro you can take them to.
Yep, we're, we're a sort of recycling desert in that sense.
Yeah.
Or returnables.
And the interesting thing is, I can tell you from experience, because I buy some of my beer in North Wapole, is when I buy it over there, I don't pay a deposit, but the bottles all have the nickel deposit on them or the 10 cent, which kind of say pass it. So I can get my beer even cheaper because I'll get another $1.20 if I turn them back into Vermont. So I think they're shooting themselves in the foot by putting the 10 cent thing. But anyway.
I'll get you some information, Rick. But I think part of the conversation that we'll have to have next year on the budget is if this is going to be a continuing growth, you know, program, we're going to have to look at some of these costs. Because as Peter said, a redemption program would be, would be additional staff, a lot of room, and it's just a lot of work.
Ton of work. I don't know if we want to get into that business or not, or whether we'll be forced to.
Not in the recycling center.
I wouldn't do it voluntarily at the moment. But if we're forced to, then we'll have to, hopefully our friends at the state will send us some help. But I don't.
Yeah, right.
Okay, thank you, Scott.
Okay, seeing there's no further questions on our financials, let's go to review agendas for the next board meeting, which is June 2nd, I believe. Yep.
Right. So we will definitely have your update from VHB with, with some of your questions that you had asked previously. I'll make sure that we can get all that material back to you. We'll have your draft RFP that we discussed tonight as well for, for conversation. Trying to think if there's anything else.
The solar RFP.
Yeah, the solar RFP, right, which is the draft RFP. I can't think of anything else off the top of my head.
Peter, we have to discuss about the vehicle testing at the select board level. Because if we're going to make a decision at the joint board.
That's true.
Right. We could probably have a discussion on that.
Probably should bring it up as an agenda item. You're right, Sue.
Anyone else have anything? Or you've got a couple of weeks to come up with something if you need it. Just get a hold of management, get a draft agenda together and go over it. Okay. Review agenda items for the joint board meeting, June 29th. One thing is parking on Green Street. I don't know if you brought it up at the village meeting.
They did. So it'll, we'll have to put it on for discussion.
It would be a discussion point. That's a handicap parking spaces they want to put in.
Yep.
Anything else? You got another few weeks to come up with if you can think of anything.
Peter, can I go back to our, our meeting? It would be good to get an update of what's happening with the rec center this summer under COVID.
Okay.
At the next meeting.
Yep, that's a good idea.
And one item, I've been talking with Linda Bushway about the possible revival of the swap shop. I'm just doing some research on it, what it would be, what it would be like, what the interest would be. It was a service that kept a lot of material out of the waste stream, and the community felt strongly about it. I know COVID will, it's not going to happen right away. And there are a lot of, there are a lot of wrinkles to it. But I'm just sort of, she was the key volunteer, as I recall. And I just wanted to just hear what, what her thoughts were.
There, the problem we had was the fact that people were leaving things in that building. They were not really exchange items. And they'd bring them in on a Wednesday, and the following Wednesday, they'd be taking it out by the cartload and throwing it away at our expense. Because nobody was monitoring the fact that they had looked stuff. I mean, as Big Gary said, vacuum cleaners, they breed like rabbits. You get one, by the end of the day, you got 10.
Right.
We brought people who would bring them in with cords that were cut off. And you ask them, is that battery operated? No, it's electric. I said, well, where's the cord? I mean, this is the stuff that you deal with because they don't want to pay $3 to get rid of their vacuum cleaner.
Right. But the, the new management, Larry, I think, wouldn't, wouldn't he be the guy that would say, that's, that's, that's trash? And?
If he has time. He's got his hands full running everything else. So you need to have someone that stands at that door. We, at one time, we had a list of materials that we were not accepting.
I remember that list.
Because we got, we were getting medical things in there. I mean, a guy brought in three boxes of syringes one day.
Oh, jeez.
And they were still in the plastic. We said, we can't take that here. He said, well, they haven't been opened. I said, it doesn't make a difference. You can't take it. Same with car seats. We had car seats down there.
I remember, yep.
You're, you're the liable one. Someone takes and someone gets hurt. Well, I got it down to recycling center. Well, guess what? We're going to be on the hook for it. So it's things like that that people have to be aware of. That, yeah, it did work at one point, but then the books got carried away. They left dictionaries. At one point, there were 10 dictionaries down there. Now, who uses a dictionary today? Everybody has a computer.
Yep.
We didn't take encyclopedias. Hardcover books are easy to get rid of. All you do is rip the hardcover off. The hardcover goes in the trash, and the, and the paper part goes in recyclable. But nobody wanted to deal with it.
Yep.
So, I mean, there were a lot of issues that have to be corrected before.
Yeah, exactly. And I don't want a few, few bad actors to ruin a service that was really appreciated and also was environmentally a really important step. And also families, families that couldn't afford some things. I saw families getting clothing there. I saw families getting electronics. So it's, it's a, it's a complicated issue. And I just wanted to gather information, not, and see if there's any feasibility there. I'm not, so just, so I'll, maybe in the July meeting, would that be a time to get the, to have that discussion? Just have people talk about it?
I would think so.
That work. I know it's complicated, but I just.
The other thing we had were these junk deals who were coming there, and they'd take stuff out. And what they couldn't get rid of, two weeks later, we end up back down there again. So it's, it's a vicious circle. You just can't, unless you get somebody with a hardwood that's willing to say, no, we're not taking that. You have to pay to get rid of it.
Yeah.
That's what you have to do. Otherwise, it'll get run away.
Accumulate, yeah.
Yeah, for sure. The policing is an issue because I know everybody's going in and out. There didn't seem to be anybody stopping anybody from doing anything, you know?
Yeah.
So, yeah, that's.
It's, it's complicated. It's not easy. I know that.
Okay, I'll take a motion to approve the orders, bills, and warrants. I assume everybody's looked at them electronically?
I, I move that we approve the orders, bills, and warrants.
We hear a second?
A second?
Which is being seconded. Any discussion, questions? Hearing none. All those in favor would say aye.
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 Coming around. Okay, while we're doing that, other business, and since we're tied up signing, we'll start with Rick. You have any other business?
I do not.
Elijah?
I'm all set, Peter.
You all set? I have none. Bonnie? Okay, there is no other business. We don't need an executive session tonight. We'll take a motion to adjourn.
I saw move.
We hear a second? Those in favor would say aye.
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 We're done.